What is up everyone? Welcome back to another episode of the eight one seven podcast. I am Jimmy here with my co-host EJ.
What's going on?
And it is another warm morning up here in the office day, EJ.
Yep.
But we're excited to be here.
Yep. What did you feel about Dante's interview last week? I feel like you get any feedback or anything. I felt like people were telling me, you know, they didn't, they didn't know Dante's story or like they love kind of his story and his perspective. So I heard a lot of good things and just, I ended up going to Black Coffee, seeing Dante, seeing Anzada, seeing a bunch of the, bunch of the people. So it's cool to see pod listeners, pod interviewers, pod, you know, and then people all in the same space. So.
Yeah, I feel like he's one of those people that is doing a ton of great work in Fort Worth that people just don't know a lot about because he's not necessarily trying to take up the spotlight. And so I was glad that he came on and let us highlight him and share some of his story with us.
Yeah, I hope that one day when like his kids are older and that he, you know, he's bored and his businesses are thriving, he'll run maybe for something and lead us to the promised land.
Well, speaking of Anzada, she was featured in a story on Fort Worth report this week. And that was surrounding a potential expansion to I-30 in the western part of the city. Tech dot is studying ways to ease increased traffic congestion west from Chisholm Trail to eight twenty. And so it's a 12 mile corridor study that will allow the transportation department to consider potential express lanes, ew, and improve the frontage roads. The 1.8 billion dollar project is split into two phases with the first recommendations to be announced in early 2023. Community Design Fort Worth, which is a nonprofit organization of designers and planning professionals, sent a letter to Tech Dot with suggestions and comments around the proposal. Anzada is the executive director of Community Design Fort Worth. And so she says, urban planners are looking at highways across the entire country and seeing the impacts that the car centric approach had for building those, not taking into consideration other users. Now people are saying, what can we do to do better going forward? You live and learn. Hopefully you don't repeat things that brought on negative consequences and take the opportunity to do better when you know better. So the big root behind this is that for almost 70 years, the highways divided west side neighborhoods, the proposed expansion exacerbates the community division. The project represents a significant opportunity to stitch the community back together with physical improvements that could make a more significant impact. There's a long history of interstates in the United States taking up minority communities, taking up land from minority communities, severing minority and white communities. And I think that's the fear that we are looking at here is will this continue to exacerbate that issue instead of finding a way to stitch the community together? Is there an opportunity to provide better access to buses, bike lanes, some form of public transportation that better alleviates the traffic concerns rather than continuing to pile onto them? I think it's well known and well studied at this point that just adding extra lanes onto highways does not actually solve traffic problems. And then the other piece is with the construction here going so close to Arlington Heights, the Fort Worth Botanic Gardens, and even Western Hills schools. Is there a pollution aspect we need to be looking at? And how would potential expansion negatively affect these communities and the neighborhoods that they butt up into? Do you have any thoughts from this?
I guess my, my thought selfishly is, is more thinking of it. How does this, how does, I guess, this integrate into the east of I-30? Especially with the new Lancaster development so close. I was just thinking like, you know, that's when I look at this map here, you know, it's, it's, what's that flow through going to look like, especially as people go to Dallas and things like that? So, I'm also, you know, I'm wondering is, 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 is people like, for instance, me and you who take thirty? Could the future development of that Lancaster development, 180 plus million, make us take Lancaster instead? Cause now it's an easier ride and could that alleviate some of this I-30 traffic through the city, not just west that build out there, like the cause and effect, looking at that map? But then also I know we are talking about the interview. We have an interview next week with Michael Crane. And you asked some questions about this and kind of like, all in all, like housing is going to have to be pressed and to widen I-30. So what is your take?
Yeah, I, I agree with you. And I mean, when we're talking about potential expansion of roads and all the construction that's going on, you know, feeder roads that are being rerouted or have extra traffic because people are trying to avoid the highway. And high schools that run right up to that, you're looking at potential increases in pedestrian bike accidents because of extra automobiles in the area. Tons of dust in the air, students with asthma or other breathing disorders potentially having issues because of this. And then in neighborhoods where we are actively looking to put more green space because having more trees, having more green space helps cool neighborhoods instead of having asphalt. We're adding a bunch more asphalt and potentially taking up those green spaces. Does that make these neighborhoods that have already been lacking in those areas and put them even further behind the eight ball? And then potentially destabilizing housing, like you said, now this isn't like a guarantee that it's going to happen. There, I think we're further out than maybe the article necessarily alludes to, like this kind of makes it seem like it's a sure thing, but I think there's a lot of study that is still going into this before it for sure happens.
And wasn't it like a cost of a billion dollars?
1.8 billion dollars.
It seems like we do not have.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, 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 and I kind of briefly said it, realizing that we're early in the show, but we also interviewed Michael Crane, District Three City Council member. And we go into this even deeper from his perspective, but we dive into a ton of topics. That interview is going to be next week because we're out for the holidays, but we wanted to give you something. And honestly, that interview, I think is like the 2.0 of everything we're going to talk to you guys about right now, not just with this short story, but with the upcoming short stories as well. So make sure you check that out, save and be prepared to see that over the holidays. But going back to the article, looking at Anzada's letter, what, what it makes me realize is how bike friendly that area is in the sense of the rest of Fort Worth. So that implications are important there. Like if, if, if those were our steps forward is actually being bike friendly in that space. How do we continue to do that? I think you're right there. Like that's, that's, that's important and needs to be considered.
Yeah. And then when you're talking about potentially infringing on bike friendliness with gas prices, what they are. You have a lot of people, lower income people turning to bikes if they weren't already to get to and from work, to get to and from school. And so if we're taking that option away, that severely infringes on people's way of life because they maybe don't have that option to get to work or get to school anymore.
Yeah. And the U-turns, like you want to talk about some crazy U-turns, you know, the exit ramps off of I-30? Like, man, that university one every time. It's like Tokyo Drift. Every time. And then, you know, oftentimes like we go to the Montgomery Plaza Antique Mall there. So we go there as well. And so you kind of miss that one because of that obnoxious U-turn there. So.
And that's a quick little like hidden one too.
And you're going fast, you know? So, yeah. I don't know, like in the letter, they talk about are these U-turns necessary? What, what are the cost savings of each alternative? So we'll see how that goes. What's kind of like from a listener perspective, we should be conscious of moving forward about this story.
I think just continuing to hear out and look into what these plans actually entail, if they'll be changing at all. And especially like when we talk about more roads being built, like is there a conversation going alongside that with public transit? And with alternative forms of transportation that aren't cars that actually give us some relief when it comes to traffic? Because just building onto roads isn't going to be the answer. So what are these conversations adjacent to that provides alternative relief to people who don't want to use their cars or can't use a car?
Yeah, yeah. No, something to keep, keep updated as we continue to look through. And yeah, maybe we can have Ms. Anzada back on the pod to just talk about this. And see what, what happens. Now let's go to the second story, which is something we talked about early is why Fort Worth is using a PR and ad agency for economic development. This is in the fourth Fort Worth report by Seth Bowden. And basically this, the conversation here is that we have partnered with a Quinn PR group, which attracts visitors from across the country and helps cities and, and market cities. They're contracted with Visit Fort Worth. The Quinn PR partnership is an expansion of an existing contract with Visit Fort Worth. The city is giving 10,000 additional dollars to the PR firm with the focus on economic development and how we communicate and support. And there's going to be campaigns and efforts throughout the city. For instance, according to the presentation at the entrepreneurship committee, the goal of the, of the org is to have one mayor or city leader profile per quarter, two broadcast interviews per quarter, one influencer engagement per quarter, five features on each of the following topics, Bitcoin, tech, healthcare, life science, infrastructure development, aerospace and defense, energy, movers and shakers and culture. Why this is big is because Fort Worth has never used as much money we give, the millions of dollars we give Visit Fort Worth. We never had a campaign or a strategy around economic development and how to thrive in Fort Worth, not just Visit Fort Worth. And so this is a big thing that is happening for us and there's going to be a campaign around it. Jimmy, as a local entrepreneur, as a small business owner, these kind of thoughts, what is your take here? But then also someone who thinks about the city from a, from a tourism lens as well, really well, what's your take?
First, I really appreciated this story. I feel like we've asked the question of, oh, like I wonder where Visit Fort Worth's marketing dollars go, what they're used for. And I feel like this answered a lot of questions for us as to not necessarily negative questions, but just giving more clarity, more behind the scenes of where they're pulling the strings. But I, one differentiation I really like about this story as well is how seeing like Fort Worth in a story is potentially more impactful than like seeing an ad for it, you know, like when you're watching a commercial for something that's being hosted in Arlington or Fort Worth, and there's a Visit Fort Worth commercial that comes up like, yeah, that's one thing. You see this event that's happening in Fort Worth. Look at what else is happening. But when you're reading Travel Leisure Magazine or watching Fox Business and you see the mayor come on or just like see a feature about Fort Worth in there, that feels a little more organic and I feel like potentially has a more impactful just has more impact when it comes to conversions and getting people to come to the city. One thing I noticed recently, did you see that the modern West billboards have gone back up here? I was like, oh man, they're back.
I forgot to send you the picture because you were at Disney, but I saw it. I was like, ah, I don't want to ruin his vacation. Let, let me not send this to him.
I saw it. I was like, oh, they're back. We're using the modern West again.
Yep. I mean, they picked up a whole new color palette and font palette and then boom, the model was back. We said something on the pod. And man, we were wrong. The modern West is here still. But hey, let's, uh, let's see what happens. Uh, yeah. I mean, what you kind of said, like they did the, like the whole Bitcoin article was a part of the strategy and was one of the things that they worked on with the city and it garnered 586 million web impressions. And we even advocated, and again, you know, I feel like the pod, we're talking about how does Fort Worth get into the national news for a long time. And so I think it's, it's just cool to now see that it's happening. Obviously this $10,000 a month is a very small budget and a drop in the budget. You know, let's just say we sell, we sell compared to what we do to sell stockyards. It's very, very small. And hell, we're going to learn about that in the next short story. So actually let's move in to the next short story. Recently, at the last day meeting with city council, there was basically 28 million dollars from the stimulus spending with, I guess, tags of what they wanted to spend that 28 million dollars. And this meeting was the first time city council was able to see what was the suggestions. Gina Bivins was really kind of upset and just kind of was like, how are you guys going to give us this stuff with the, how you're going to spend this money? And us not be prepared for this? Didn't give us notes, didn't give us updates. The first time our city council saw how we were going to spend 28 million dollars of stimulus funding was at their meeting. They were not aware of these recommendations before that kind of caused a Gina to kind of say, hey, we need to take us, uh, we need to think about this. Michael Crane saying, we need to take a step back here and prepare for something like this. One of the recommendations was Visit Fort Worth, $750,000 for a budget shortfall and its Fort Worth Event Trust Fund. Visit Fort Worth previously received $6 million in American Rescue Plan funding, which is interesting. Visit Fort Worth agreed to pay professional bull riders $3 million annually in exchange for hosting the PBR World Finals in Fort Worth from 2022 to 2024. According to documents obtained by Fort Worth Report, the state of Texas Event Trust Fund was supposed to supplement the payment with $2 million. But the changes in the fund funding is now agreeing to pay Visit Fort Worth only 1.5 million dollars. So now we're short a half a million dollars. PPR agreed to split the difference and require only an additional $250,000 from Visit Fort Worth. And the city also suggested the council approved $2 million for workers compensation claims, which documents indicate the program on average receives 1,800 claims per, per year. With COVID, it has increased to 2,100 claims. They also suggested allocating eight million to create 280 new, less expensive, affordable housing with Tobias Place. An additional four million will go toward a gun violent prevention collaborative between Texas County and United Way of Tarrant County. There's real, you know, there's continued more suggestions here. And the real reason why this is a story is because all these suggestions were created without city councils awareness before the meeting.
Yeah. And city council takes a break in July. And so it's kind of like this is presented to us. There's not really a timeline on it, like the money doesn't need to be spent immediately, but you're giving this to us right before we go on a break so that we forget about it. I, you know, just really, really poor timing all around. And this is money that is coming out of the American Rescue Plan Act, which isn't going to happen like every couple of years, you know? It's not like there's a new deal that happened every five, 10 years since the first one did, like there's kind of a once in a lifetime influx of money that the city can potentially use really well on projects that are really, really important for the city moving forward. And so just kind of whittling down from dozens of recommendations that weren't even shared with the city council to these few. Feels like there is a pretty big communication gap between the city manager's office and city council who ultimately gets to vote and decide on how this money is going to be allocated.
And you know, I think I kind of went through probably two thirds of the recommendations on the article, which will have into description. So you can kind of understand it better. It does have a lot of money and dollar signs and projects in it all at once. But what's your take on the three million annually to the PBR World Finals to host? Based off our last article, we're spending $120,000 on economic development.
Yeah, I think that you could easily say that like they go hand in hand that like realistically you spend the three million, what comes back in economic development will hopefully create that funding in itself to go back to there. I think there is the question of like, who is that funding actually helping? Like where is it going? Is it just city occupancy? Hotel occupancy tax, which then loops back into the short-term rental conversation. Is it going to, you know, only a handful of small businesses that are right next to the Dicky's Arena or right around the stockyards? Or are we getting to see this spread around the city a little bit more, which I think would be really interesting data to come up with, like you can follow people's phones or somebody can follow people's phones. Like where are you seeing data around the people that go to these events? Where are you seeing them spread out to next? Is it, you know, just a one-way street to the hotel right there, one-way street up to the stockyards? Or are we seeing them flower out a little bit into the rest of the city as they're spending money here? So I mean, I think it's part of the economic development pieces. You pay that and then that kind of comes back and hopefully creates its own cycle of spending and income for the city.
Yeah, yeah. And by the way, we will, we have, we have it on book, a interview with Robert Sterns in July. So that will be one of our interviews and I'm sure we're going to discuss this campaign and the economic strategy for Fort Worth moving forward. Kind of finishing off this kind of short story here after, I want to kind of hit here, David Cook, the city manager said, we're in no rush. If we want to have more discussion over how we want to allocate the remaining money, that's fine. This is again, no, after spending 146 million dollars in federal funds, the city will have to make tough decisions around how to spend this 28 million dollars as all the requested projects left is a total price tag of 133 million dollars. So city council is going to have some, have to have discussions on where they want to go. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of opinions there. And I know Gina Bivins is advocating for updates to, I want to say Randall Mill Road, which would fix issues there around, I guess drainage improvements on that road and impact kind of, I guess people have lost their lives on this road. So she's really an advocate for that. So we'll kind of see what happens there, but I thought this was an important short story to add to the list. Jimmy, do you want to bring us to the main story?
Yeah. So we're going to talk about Roe v Wade being overturned and the implication of it for Texans and Fort Worthians. Honestly, like I totally understand if this is a conversation that you don't want to engage in, that you're just feeling really tired and beat down of everything that has been happening and 50 years of women's rights precedent being unfolded with the potential promise of more to come, thanks to some things John Cornyn has said, thanks to Clarence Thomas's concurring opinion. But we think it's important to have the conversation about what this means for us here and hopefully get to provide some sort of insight as to if you find yourself in the situation where you want to make that choice for any reason, what's the safest way to do that now, living in a state that has a trigger law for going into effect against abortions? So Friday, the Supreme Court ruled after a really like crappy couple of weeks for the Supreme Court, like there is a lot that has been happening, flying a little bit more so under the radar that makes Friday's decision even more weighty. But the Supreme Court ruled six to three that Roe v Wade was decided upon poor precedent and the right to an abortion is not something that is guaranteed. Because of the laws that Texas has passed recently, that means that their so-called trigger law would go into effect 30 days after the Supreme Court's ruling, making performing abortion a felony. The law would make an exception only to save the life of the pregnant patient, or if they quote unquote, risk substantial impairment of major bodily function. Doctors could face life in prison and fines up to a hundred thousand dollars if they perform abortions in violation of the law. People who had abortions would not be prosecuted under the law. Tens of thousands of people each year get abortions in Texas, around 50 to 55,000 obtained one each year from 2014 to 2021. These totals account only for abortions performed legally in Texas. I mean, there's just a ton of sadness that goes into this of abortions aren't going away. If we actually wanted to fix abortions, we would focus on the reasons that people are having abortions. You know, Greg Abbott came out last year and said that he's going to get rid of all the rapists in Texas. I don't think he's done that. And even not in those cases, just the state that we're in right now with lack of affordable housing, lack of access to maternity leave to, I mean, Texas has one of the highest maternal mortality rates in the country. There are so many reasons to not want to have a baby or carry a pregnancy to full term. So specifically for Texas, some big city districts will say that they will not prosecute abortion doctors. Five Texas district attorneys, Dallas, Travis, Bexar, Nuasis and Fort Bend have publicly promised they will not pursue abortion related criminal charges if Roe, when Roe v Wade is overturned. Others are expected to quietly decline to take these cases. So we kind of know where the next battleground is for elections and that will be at the district attorney level. Unfortunately, Tarrant County was obviously not on that list and our district attorney has come out and said that they're not going to be one of those counties. Overall, I mean, it's just been a somber weekend since that has happened.
And it comes on top of Yvaldi and the abysmal reform on gun laws that happened that also came out last week. And you know, some, some kind of data here that I think it's just, it needs to kind of be out there. In Texas, 90% of all Texas residents who had abortions in 2020 did so in the first trimester of pregnancy. In 2020, 61% of Texans who got an abortion had already had one or more live births, according to the state's data. So these are mothers who have made these tough decisions. The other big part here is that 75% of women who had an abortion in the US were low income, which is seen as $31,000 or less. In Texas, 73% of people who received an abortion in 2020 were women of color. And so you're just kind of seeing who's being at risk and who's being charged here. And you mentioned, which was also going to be my loss, is how Tarrant County was not on that list and how criminal district attorney Sharon Wilson is going to not stand up, but however, we know. not stand up, but however, we know that Sharon Wilson is a part of the guard. I recently saw Sharon Wilson present and she had a big cross on her neck. And I can only imagine her views around abortion probably comes from a very old school conservative religious view that she has about it. And based off everything else from Aaron Dean to Wayburn and she has used just following the rules as her scapegoat. She's kind of, to me, reminds me of that grumpy monster from Monsters Inc. Who just kind of like says, this is what I do. This is how it works. Mike Wazowski, you know, that's kind of like what we have. But unlike Monsters Inc., she won't be the hero. So yeah, um, in twenty twenty, fifty five thousand one hundred and seventy five Texas residents received legal abortions. So yeah, we're impacting a lot of people. What is your take on? I know, like behind all of this, we kind of saw this coming, but how do you see this goes into November? And the recent data survey around how, I think the, the Quinnipiac survey was five points for Beto to Abbott. And you have people saying, Democrats saying, hey, oh yeah, we'll see you at the voting box, but then you'll have some Democrats say, we can't be waiting till November and here's the things we need to be doing now. What is your take on that effect of it all?
Yeah, I think that first off, like the next step is making sure that organizations that will help women seeking an abortion get one safely. Whether that's somehow inside of Texas or getting them to places outside of Texas that can help them get abortions, like we need to make sure that those organizations are being supported in ways that allow them to create. I don't know if you want, like I saw somebody refer to like an Underground Railroad for getting women safely to the medical care that they need. I think the like next steps for Texas that we have seen kind of laid out is like you had Ken Paxton release his staff early to celebrate the decision and say that that's going to be an annual holiday for them. Wow. Like that's the type of people we're dealing with. We have John Cornyn saying that we need to take a look at Brown versus Board of Education. And he has previously mentioned Loving versus Virginia. We have the concurrent decision, opinion by Clarence Thomas mentioning Obergefell. Three K, mentioning three cases decided on, deciding on the similar precedent around access to contraception, gay marriage, even same sex relationships. So like in a state like Texas and in a city like Fort Worth that yes, is trending blue, but still very purple and still very red when we're talking about the people in charge and the people in Tarrant County. The next few years presents a very potentially scary and dangerous environment for being here if you do not fall into the cis white male category. And so I think that there is a lot that people need to start to do as far as preparing themselves and preparing their family to safely navigate this. I mean, another Supreme Court decision from a couple of weeks ago, essentially allow, gives border patrol agents jurisdiction to enter your home without warning, without warrant. If you're within a hundred miles of a federal border. Now you look at that, you're like, oh, okay, that's Mexico and Canada. But no, that's the water coastlines around the Gulf of Mexico, around the Atlantic, around the Pacific. That's, I've, I've seen both sides of if that also refers to international airports. We are obviously within a hundred miles of multiple international airports. And I wouldn't want to be the one relying on the Supreme Court right now to decide in your favor if of international airport counts. Like we've kind of seen what way that they're going with this. So I think that there's a, a time where people need to bind together, get your trusted group of people that you know you can rely on and figure out how to support organizations that are making sure women have access to the medical care they need. Because we're kind of getting into uncharted or previously charted territory, I would say, uh, from the first part of the nineteenth or twentieth century. So I think there's a lot that North Texans have to be potentially worried about and focused on from this.
Yeah, once, one study looked at requests to aid access in international nonprofit that mails abortion pills directly to individuals. The study found that in the four months after Texas new law went into effect, request to aid access from Texas nearly tripled. So that seems like in addition to seek abortion pills online. I wonder what that, how, when do they start now, not just looking at our borders, but now looking into our post office boxes and what's being shipped to us and things like that?
And Merrick Garland has said that the FDA endorsed pill Mifepristone, um, which is a medical abortion pill that was approved by the FDA twenty years ago. You can't be prosecuted for taking that. Again, it's one of those things where are they, is the next step that we're seeing where these things are being shipped and them, you know, coming and prosecuting you without, uh, taking that into consideration. And then also like, I would say if you track your period on a period tracking app, like probably not a good idea to do that anymore. There are just a lot of things to take out of the like public realm of data before this potentially snows ball, snowballs further.
Like I feel like we're trying to figure out like, when is enough enough? Where Texas does go blue, like what, if you're a, if you're a centered Republican or a moderate Republican, like does your tax dollars and how much money you make or don't make in a, would a politician matter right now to you? Like, is that still your priority? Like, I'm trying to figure out when's enough enough. And like, when you see what's being said by Cornyn, who is technically supposed to be the one with the most sense out of the ones. Like we've been actually like, cause he was doing the gun law stuff, like, oh, maybe he's trying. He was doing the semiconductor stuff. So maybe, you know, and now he, you know, he falls off. What, like, what is it? What does it take? Like what is, what do we do?
Well, and I think that's an interesting conversation and in the last week, the Texas GOP released their party platform for this year, which includes a lot around abortion. It includes, uh, pieces around revisiting separate but equal. It includes revisiting cases around being able to show prejudice in who can vote. And it also very blankly, very point blank states that the twenty twenty election was not properly won, was a fraud. So like, if you are voting Republican in this coming election, like let's rewind to twenty twenty, the, the party platform was just whatever Trump wants to do. Like that's paraphrasing, but it basically literally says like, we don't really have a platform, whatever Trump wants to do. Now there, so if you voted for that, what it, you know, I have thoughts, but whatever. If you're voting for a Texas Republican in twenty twenty two, you are explicitly saying that one, you're, one, you are voting against religious freedom. You are saying that my religion as a evangelical Christian is the law of the land. You are literally voting that, that Joe Biden is not the rightful president, that the twenty twenty election was a fraud. And you are literally voting that we should revisit the landmark civil rights cases of the sixties and seventies and potentially overturn them, like literally how, like literally how can we have more than fifty percent of people voting for this?
Yeah.
It is insane. And I guess the other piece that I will say as right, like somebody who is an ally in this is that I'm sure the demand for hysterectomies is going to increase significantly now. Hysterectomies are significantly more difficult and expensive than vasectomies are. Like it is a very, very easy to get a vasectomy. Super simple, super straightforward and you know, they say, don't walk into it with the intention of reversing it, but if you got down the road and wanted to reverse it, you can. Not the case with hysterectomies, like they are expensive. They are time intensive, just in the amount of time it takes to get on the books for one and then like get approved for one. The recovery time is longer and that's the end of the line. So I think there's also a lot to be said of like if you want to be an ally in this and you don't have the intention of having kids. Maybe that's a way to help. I think the other piece is Clarence Thomas said they're coming for contraception. So within who knows how long contraception might not even be an option. So I think that there's just a lot that potentially goes into this of how can you help support in even more physical ways than people might be considering.
Yeah.
If that's a fair thing to say.
Yeah.
I think overall it was very disappointing to see the the way that the country is moving. And like, we can have the conversation around if you think vasect, or if you think abortion is right or wrong. Ultimately, your religion does not determine the laws of the land. And as somebody who has come up in that faith, I would probably contend that your theology is off too. But that's a conversation for another day.
I think that's also the why. I, I, again, I, I'm trying to figure out how this is happening in front of our faces. And, you know, I went to North Park last weekend and there was just groves of people smiling and buying stuff and just looking like life is happy. At the same time, all this is going down. And, and I'm just trying to figure out like going back, like, is it because Republicans are more stabilized in the sense of they all believe the same view? They're often the same ethnicity, they're often the same, yeah, you know, basics. So they're able to streamline, um, data and communication where Democrats, you can have Democrats, there's a, a plethora of different Democrats who basically represents the other all religious institutions. So it's not as something that is organized because it's more of like a bunch of micro associations into it. And is that one of like, is that why, like, you know, this is, cause I just get confused on what, they're smart in the sense of they're like, why would, like, why would Cornyn tweet that? Why would they say these things like? Cause it feels like if you want to stay in power, you wouldn't, but they must know something around data, around who's voting, around something like, this is a smart play. Like to agitate everybody is a smart play. And I'm, and I'm just lost in a sense of like, how is that true? Or is it just because the majority of people, like we're so far in the sauce, me and you, Jimmy? As readers of the newspaper, as podcasters, as college graduates, as white collar families. Are we so away from what it means to be an average American that it's just playing over people's, like, we're just, we're, we, again, that's, like, so that's what it is?
Yeah, I mean, I think that obviously where you consume your news is a very important piece of this. You know, a lot of, a lot of people have privilege, just want to play the I'm not political or I don't want to think about it game or card. And I think that, you know, they're, they have, after fifty years, I guess for, it's been forty years since Reagan decided to make this a hot button topic. So now that we're forty years in, they're going to try and figure out which is the next easiest hot button topic to go for. And obviously we know that they can and will follow through on their plans to make these things happen. So it's just kind of seeing like which one's next. I would imagine that the whole idea that they continue to put out that trans people are groomers is probably a pretty good indication of where they want to go next and who they want to attack next.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, I think that people, the U.S. on the tail end of what we can call a democracy is, wants to relive the glory days of like the late forties and fifties and sixties. And so we're trying to move, bring back the characteristics of the forty, late forties and fifties and sixties. And this is the, the start of that.
Yeah. I know we got to get to wins and losses and all in all, uh, we, we, we did have an interview set up today with our city council member, Michael Crane, District Three. And as much as we were excited for that, and we are excited for that, we just felt like we needed to do this pod because and address this. I don't know where it goes. I'm tired personally of feeling like having to stop and say sorry or say and just gun laws and this and abortion rights. I, and I, I, it is just discouraging, but hey, the eight one seven podcast is here. And we're going to navigate through this here in, in our little, uh, group. And you know, things are happening. I think we gotta all believe in our voices. We gotta all vote, we gotta all, um, champion and allow us to be heard together. Uh, and we can't, for every one of us who stays quiet, you allow the establishment to, to exist. So if there's anyone who listens, who has thoughts or wants more platform for this, just let us know. Happy to have you on if you're leading some meaningful stuff here in Fort Worth. Because we're allies and want to get out of this hellhole. So Jimmy, let's move to the wins and losses and, uh, keep going.
Yeah, my loss and, and this is a little bit in jest. But there was all of the excitement around the Bitcoin machines, you know, a couple of months ago. And we, you know, joked a lot about them. But as of last week, Fort Worth is exchanging its three Bitcoin mining machines for a single more energy efficient model. The new machine will use less energy and mine more Bitcoin, which seems to be worth less and less every day. Got a better, more efficient machine. I just think it was really funny that this generated, you know, a lot of clicks and excitement and, uh, really quickly, it's like, nah, we made a mistake around it. We're going to try and do something else. We'll see what happens.
Yeah. The estimated value of the new machine is nine thousand dollars, uh, where the combined total of the others was twenty one hundred dollars. If Fort Worth decides to stop mining Bitcoin, the machines will return back to the Texas Blockchain Council. This also goes to me. This also goes to me, there is a, a recent national story around politics of blockchain and crypto. Um, and how there's super PACs and PACs for, for blockchain, uh, politicians, $24 million was, where it was funded from a couple of the founders of FTX. I'm wondering what the impact of that's going to be. Moving forward, even as city council members run, as people run for mayor, re-mayor stuff, I think this is all interesting. Especially at the state of, like you said, crypto is falling dramatically and all that stuff. It'd be interesting to see, what I'm frustrated off is like Fort Worth to say like, this is what getting national looks like. Like, oh, let's fake that we care about something, but this isn't a part of our initiative. And whatever you agree with crypto or not, I'm not a fan, but if you are like, at least actually, if you're going to say you're doing something, do it and, 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 and run with it. Um, don't just do a gimmick thing and then say that we're, hey, that was just for a gimmick, guys, no worries. We're not serious about it. That, 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 we have to stand on some type of principle of what we believe in. That's what's going to attract people here, you know?
I, I thought this is, the quote was funny. It seemed misguided that Fort Worth believed that having a computer system running a program would raise the profile of Fort Worth as a forward-thinking city. Gordon Kelly, a longtime tech executive said.
Yeah. I guess my loss I already shared was Sharon Wilson, who um, did not join the other large district attorney officials who said they will stand up against Roe v. Wade cases. She basically quote said, "My oath and that of everyone in my office is to preserve, protect and defend the constitution and the laws of the United States and Texas. Prosecutors do not make the laws. We follow it. Uh, we follow Roe v. Wade when it was the law and we will follow Texas state law now." So you can take that for how you take it, but, um, lost because she's not being bold and just accepting situations.
What's your win?
My win is maybe healthy national news, unlike crypto, and that is the Juneteenth Museum. Take Shape in Fort Worth was a title in the New York Times. And, uh, it kind of dived into the, the funding we have in place. I think it's great that this is in the New York Times. It was a long piece. Uh, it talked about the $7 million project. It talks about how it's, the goals for it to be open in 2024 in the Juneteenth holiday. It talked about the 50,000 square foot, uh, space for the museum. It talked about the contract and who will be running it, the, the big, uh, group, I guess it's, um, I don't know how to say it, Jark Ingles Group?
Uh, big, yeah.
Yeah. And so, um, yeah. And so all in all, I thought that was a win because you want to get tourists here. Here's a great way to get tourists here, um, who want to see new things. And yeah, that was my win, but I know you had some funny stuff about it.
Uh, yeah. So the original rendering from the architect that was featured as the, you know, prominent image on the New York Times, uh, actually used the skyline of downtown Austin instead of Fort Worth. Uh, you can tell that it's Fort Worth now. Um, but I thought that was pretty humorous that how many eyes have looked at this? And nobody recognized that they were using downtown Austin, uh, which some people beg the question of, is this a design that was planned for something in Austin that didn't get used? And so they just transplanted it to the, uh, Juneteenth Museum. That's obviously not confirmed, just some speculation, but, uh, pretty humorous that they forgot to change it.
And, and let me just be clear here, uh, is that if, if the national, if the Juneteenth Museum is, um, doesn't live up to hype and it's like underwhelming and people get there like, this is what we have, this is it. It is 100% on the city of Fort Worth fault. Visit Fort Worth. Everyone who claims about tourism, claims about wowing people. If it doesn't wow people, like the alley, what the hell is it called? The Mule Alley and, and Drover, if it doesn't wow people the way those two places wow, that is failure. Let me just be clear here, because this is a huge opportunity to become nationally relevant, which we all care about. And so if it looks like basic things, we failed.
I will say the building does look beautiful.
It does. That's what I'm saying. The hype looks real.
Yeah.
But let's make sure that it carries, carries the weight.
Yeah.
All right.
My win is that Trinity Pride Festival was this weekend, despite it being like 105 degrees and all of the potential negative news coming out over the weekend. Um, it looks like it was packed. We, we didn't make it out because it was our, our kid's second birthday, uh, and so we had her party, but uh, all the pictures and videos I've seen looked like it was absolutely packed. People were having a great time. And I just love that a celebration like that has taken hold in the city. And that there's a lot of people rallying behind the, the y'all means all mantra.
Love it. Well, thank you for listening to the eight one seven podcast. Like we said earlier, next week we will be off, but we have an amazing interview, one of my favorites with Michael Crane, City Council, District Three. We talk everything under the sun from how to navigate Fort Worth politics to short-term rentals, to west development and recruiting companies. We talk about it all and just also to hear his story as someone who grew up in Fort Worth, uh, who left Fort Worth to do international work at the embassy in Beijing, like that perspective has been huge. And, uh, so we're excited that that's coming out next week on the eight one seven podcast. It'll be out on Monday, July 4th. Um, so if you're taking over a hangover or you're, you're, you're waiting for people to wake up because, you know, you slept, they slept in late, check out that interview and make sure to subscribe and tell your friends you're hanging out with on July 4th, because a lot of you are going to be out, not in the city. Tell them about the eight one seven podcast.
Thanks everyone for listening and we'll see you next week.